...of the Mayor of Council of the City of Bisbee County, Cochise, and State of Arizona. To be held on Tuesday, January 7, 2020, at 7:00 PM at the City Hall Building, 915 South Tokerville Road, Bisbee, Arizona. Ms. Coronado, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Louis Pollak.
Here.
Councilmember Joni Giacamino.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Higgins.
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hansen.
Here.
Councilmember Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff Teresa Coleman, City Manager, Ashley Coronado, City Clerk, Carrie Bagley, Finance Director, Joelle Landers, Personnel Director, Jesus Haro, Public Works Director, Alberti Chave, Police Chief, George Castillo, Fire Chief, James Ledbetter, City Attorney.
Thank you. For a moment of silence, I'd like us to take a moment of silence, hoping that cool heads and sanity prevails with the ongoing events that are unfolding as we speak in Iran and Iraq. So please join with me. Thank you. Would you please stand and join in the hushed allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. Happy New Year. Good to see you. Thanks for joining us, both in-house, as they say, and out-house, which is the... Of course, I guess it could be, if we're talking about Facebook, that could be appropriate. In any event, I wanted to take just a minute here, talk about things that I've been involved in the last two weeks since our last meeting. And that was December 19th. I assisted the Fire Department and Police Department on a fatal fire investigation in all of Bisbee. And I wanted to take a real quick... A second to talk about the... Again, Chief, your department did a terrific job in stopping that fire. There wasn't anything you could have done about the decedent. Unfortunately, that was a done deal. But you stopped that fire in an historic area without spreading the adjoining buildings. So it was truly a job well done. Thank you, sir. On the 19th, in the evening, I presented Scout Troop Number One, our own scout troop, a $500 check from a local foundation. They just wanted the mayor to do it. I have no idea why. But I was always pleased to do that. So it's always good. That was at the seniors' center. So we had seniors there, and we had the scouts there, and it was a lot of fun. On the 20th, I attended a legislative meeting in Sierra Vista. Rick Mueller had invited me, the mayor of Sierra Vista. And we sat down with our two state legislators and senator and discussed local issues. I once again hammered them about PSPRS and got a glazed eye look. In any event, it was actually pretty well received. And I wanted to publicly thank Mayor Mueller for that invitation. He does this every year. We were at the meet last year also. And on the 21st, I attended Award One meeting. And that was at the Central School Project, and it was well-attended. And Bill certainly, his Award One representative, was there, and Leslie. And I wanted to congratulate Leslie particularly. She just did an outstanding job in facilitating that meeting and getting information from the constituents as to what their needs and problems were. So, well done, Leslie. Thank you. On the 29th, I had the honor of the Rabbi from Sierra Vista contacting me and asked if I would light the main candles with the menorah on the last day of Hanukkah. And so I did that at Grassy Park, and it was a very beautiful celebration. And it was interesting because we had people attending that were... knew nothing about it. They were tourists and happened to be Jewish and happened to happen on that ceremony. So it was kind of fun to be able to be involved in that. And then today, I participated in a PBS interview, which is a follow-up interview on our anti-opioid program, Cochise Addiction Recovery Project. And that'll be airing on the 13th and the 14th. Chief Chave was there, feeding me my lines. And Monica, Monica is the young lady, AmeriCorps Vista Worker that is being compensated through a grant for Parry for addiction recovery. So that was very, very nice to have those two there also. And lastly, I just wanted to thank the VAC, Bisbee Arts Commission. As many of us know, they have a cigarette machine that they have repurposed, and it has tiny pieces of art in it from all different artists. And it's in the, if you will, the convention center, you know, outside of the tables entrance. And it's making money. And that money then comes back and is provided in grants, which we vote on, and which, as you recall, we voted on last meeting, a whole bunch of them.
There's more coming.
And there's more coming. All right. And so they presented us with a really nice piece of art, and it's signed by all of the artists. It's like, just kind of show you like this. We'll hang that in City Hall, so it'll be prominently displayed. And I just wanted to publicly thank VAC for that really nice gift. And with that, we'll go to the call to public. And the first call to public is Noma Gugat. Welcome, sir.
Hello. Check one. Streetlights on all night are a huge waste of energy and are of concern to our fragile planet. With wildfires and major hurricanes devastating human civilization, the time to act in favor of the environment is now. As well as helping the planet, less streetlights in Bisbee will mean less energy bills for the city. There are so many important things that the city can be spending its money on rather than wasteful light. The Dark Skies Movement is hugely popular in Bisbee. It is encouraging people to look up and be amazed by worlds beyond our own. A lot of people in Bisbee also want lights to go out because people naturally sleep better in the dark. One study even found that women who live under bright streetlights are more likely to get breast cancer. Our brains produce melatonin for darkness. And when we turn night into day artificially, we lose that chemical balance in our body. As well as lights on all night may make us feel more secure, there is no evidence that streetlights actually stop crime. More criminals even... Many criminals even light lights because it is less conspicuous in a flashlight. There are many reasons for Bisbee to turn off streetlights, for the planet, for our pocketbooks, and for our health. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Ms. Claire Chapeau. Welcome.
Kind of losing my voice because I have bronchitis, but... Mayor Council, I'd like to thank you for your time. I would like to know why Mayor Council had not put out there for a permanent City Attorney. It's a little late now as Mr. Ledbetter's contract expires at the end of this month. Again, we fall short in responding to something that truly needs to be done and discussed and concentrate on things that aren't as necessary at this time. Also, in regards to asking the City Attorney for his assistance in revising the ordinances and charter appears to be fine to me, but rewriting them himself? We are paying him $10,000 a month to write these? That's why we have committees, boards, and commissions. Then he can check... Excuse me. Hold on. Okay, sorry. Then he can check they do not overstep state or federal statutes and laws. I do have a question while I'm here. I know you're not supposed to answer anything, but maybe you can tell me where in the meeting I can ask you? I want to know what the Appeals Board for Property Management Code is. Have you done it? Does somebody that can tell me what that does? I know I'm not supposed... You're not supposed to answer questions now.
The answers to that would be available on your website, ma'am.
I tried to find out, but I couldn't find the section.
It would be under commissions, and it should give the mission of that particular committee.
I did look under there.
I will reach out to you tomorrow.
Wonderful. Thank you so very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have something else. I do want you to revisit petition. And I had to use a letter because I didn't have a form at the time. But the letter reads, "Mayor Council, this letter shall serve as a petition with this updated transparency." Thank you.
Yes. As a point of order with a petition, do we not need to hear that petition since we have to act on it within three meetings?
You normally would come through the clerk, but depending on what the petition is, I just don't know.
Okay. That's fine. Would you provide that to the council by email tomorrow? Thank you, ma'am.
I looked in the charter. It just said that the petition has to be served. It does not say other than what it is, okay? And I looked through the statute. It was the same thing. I do not have to provide any more information than what I gave the transparency.
I wasn't questioning you, Ms. Chapeau. I was questioning our procedure, not yours.
Okay. So I have to provide you with further information until it comes up for the agenda. And I would hope that Mayor Council would not accept it for one of the agenda meetings.
We have requirements, and we will follow those requirements.
I know your requirements, but we also have history, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Go to Accounts Table.
I vote that we pay accounts payable in the amount of $200,748.92.
Second?
We have a motion. We have a second if we have any questions. Hearing none, those in favor of paying accounts payable, certified by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Consent agenda items A through K. A, approval of the resignation of Lawrence Phillips from the Streets and Infrastructure Committee. B, approval of the reappointment of Carrie Bagley to the Public Safety Retirement Personnel Board. C, approval of the appointment of William Grumman to the Library Advisory Board. D, approval of the reappointment of Thomas Patterson to the Police and Fire Advisory Committee. E, approval of the reappointment of Thomas Patterson to the Board of Adjustment. F, approval of the reappointment of Albert Hopper to the Appeals Board for the Property Maintenance Code. G, approval of the reappointment of Nancy Piranha to the Planning and Zoning Commission. H, approval of the reappointment of Dwayne Dome to the Community Sustainability Commission. I, approval of the appointment of Al Anderson to the Appeals Board for the Property Maintenance Code. J, approval of the appointment of Todd Conklin to the Appeals Board for the Property Management Code. K, approval of the appointment of John Crowe to the Appeals Board for the Property Maintenance Code.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item A.
You'd like to pull which?
Item A.
All right. Item A is pulled for discussion. Do we have a motion on the remaining items?
I vote that we approve the consent agenda items B through K. My second.
Ms. Coronado?
Mayor Pro Tem Pollak.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hansen.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye.
The consent agenda items A through K, or B through K, are approved. Item number A, Ms. Pollak.
I wanted to say a few words about Larry. I got to know him as council liaison to the Streets and Infrastructure Committee. And I'd like to recognize his knowledge and experience in the field of asphalt and pavements and to point out that he would be very hard to replace. And that I wish to, for the record personally, thank him for his 11 years of service on the Streets and Infrastructure Committee.
Yes, thank you. As a prior member of that committee myself, and then council liaison to that committee, I can certainly agree with you. Thank you.
Could I also add my thoughts to that too, since I was the liaison before? He was invaluable. He did an absolutely fabulous job in keeping things... Above board is the only thing I can think of. He really knows his stuff. And whenever there was a question about what kind of mix or is this going to be a problem, he'd go out there and he would look at it and make sure that there wasn't a problem. So I would like to also add my thanks for his time.
Do we have a motion?
I vote that we approve consent agenda item A. My second.
Thank you. We have a motion. A second, Ms. Coronado.
Mayor Pro Tem Pollak.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hansen.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye. Motion. Item number A is approved unanimously. Item number three, presentation of the City of Bisbee annual audit report for the year ending June 30, 2019, by Stephen Palmer, CPA of Pinton and Burton. And it is Stephen.
I'm not Steve.
No, you're not. But we're happy you're here, so please, welcome. And I'll ask you to introduce yourself. I know you will.
I am Jennifer Schreiber.
When she's done.
I am a manager of the firm, and I have worked on your audit since we started doing it since 2017. And I...
It's a comment. It's just kind of waking up.
I have a nice little slideshow. I'm going to kind of... I like to do these things quick and easy because I know you guys are busy and then open it up for any questions you might have. So I will just jump right into it. So the first items that I'm going to cover are your audit reports. So on pages one and two of your financial statements, you have your independent auditors' report, which is... Sorry, I haven't moved anywhere. Is saying that we obtained sufficient audit evidence for reasonable assurance that there weren't any material modifications that should be made to the financial statements. Your second report is going to be at the back of your financial statements. That's your report on compliance and on internal control or financial reporting. We didn't have any material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies. We did have a compliance finding. And this is similar to what you had last year. It was just one of the funds that was overextended by $12,0094. And I think that was a tiny, probably a tiny issue with some of the grants. So we've got that. Okay. As you know, in your financial statements, you kind of have two sets of financial statements. You have your government-wide, which is your full accrual. And you have your governmental funds, which are on the current resource focus. So your government-wide, the big difference between the two government-wide statements have one term of net capital assets. Your governmental funds, the not. So this is just some highlights. And if you go in your financial statements in the MDA, you have kind of comparative little condensed statements that are helpful to look at. So your total net position, which is your equity at year-end, is $7.8 million. And what we expect to see over time are increases, decreases in that. To see, it kind of tells you the health of the government. And so it's a number to watch. And so we have a decrease of $1.2 million for the fiscal year. And some of that... Let's see. You have, on your governmental funds, you have a deficit. That is mostly coming from the pension that had to be put on the books several years ago. And that's kind of what threw you under there. But you're combined between your business type funds, your governmental funds, $7.8 million. So these are just some little graphs. So this is on your general fund. This is a governmental fund. That very top line you see there are your total assets for the general fund, which was at $4.3 million. The line right below that was your fund balance, your equity, which was at $3.9 million. And that very bottom pink line are your total liabilities, which is at $492,000 at year-end. So one thing I did want to point out is for your fund balance, if you look at your financial statements, you have a committed balance. I think it's $2.1 million. And some of that, the $2 million of that is committed for the construction of City Hall. And so that was a kind of a change we had in comparison to last year. This is your general fund cash trend. You see that big increase between '17, '18, and we had an additional increase in '19. That was those insurance proceeds that came in, and we had some collection of some of that receivable for this last year. And so we had another increase on that. This is our revenue expense. Governmental funds don't have a profit motive. So what we expect to see over several years are those two lines kind of crisscrossing. Some years, you're going to have revenues in excess as you're accumulating funds for projects. And later, you're going to have higher expenditures as you spend on those funds. And so we see that you guys have been pretty close, and you've been doing that crisscrossing like we'd expect. Last year, we had the insurance money that came in, and so that kind of gave us a little bump out there. For the current year... I didn't bring my glasses in. So for the current year, we had revenues at $7,440,000. And for expenses, we had $7,287,000. So we had a slight expenditure, you know, net loss for the current year. Over the last five years, our cumulative expenditures have exceeded revenues by $118,000. Now, I would expect for next year that those expenses are going to kind of peak up as you guys do the City Hall project. And so we're kind of expecting that expense to be a lot higher than revenues next year or as that project progresses. Enterprise funds. So these are your full accrual. Again, the basic difference between the two is you have depreciation for capital assets, and your long-term debt is on the books. Whereas on your governmental funds, those get one through the income statement, so the balance sheet. Enterprise funds, one thing to remember, they should be self-supporting. Your revenue should be covering the expenditures of them. Okay, wastewater fund. So over the past five years, revenues have exceeded in the wastewater fund by $646,000. This last year, we had expenses kind of up and above that. We had expenses of $3 million, and our revenues were at $2.4. Yeah, $2.4. Now, in 2015, you guys received that big grant. So we had, you know, that has kind of been in there, and that's why we had that big peak there. But if you disregard that revenue, that grant revenue that you receive, you're having expenses in excess of revenues of $1.3 million. That's just right on the bottom of it. So we're kind of showing if you disregard that, you have kind of a running net loss in there. This is our cash trend for wastewater. Now, back in 2016 or '18, we paid off some debt. We did a refunding, and we paid down, I think it was about $2 million. And so that's that large increase you see between '17 and '18. And we see a general kind of increase this year, up to $515,000 in total cash, $64,000 you have restricted for debt service. Sanitation fund. Okay. So over the past five years, on the sanitation fund, we've had revenues in excess of about $86,000. This last year, you have revenues in excess of expenditures of $72,000. So that's kind of what that big portion of that $86,000 is. So we're seeing kind of that crisscross here, which we generally wouldn't want to see on a enterprise fund. We'd like to see either those numbers pretty close or those lines pretty close. But it does happen on occasion. Here's your cash trends of four. Over the last five years, we didn't have any cash in there. This year, we actually ended up with $63,000 at year-end as a result of the revenues in excess of expenditures. Me mine. Each year, we had a net revenue in there. So over the past five years, revenues have exceeded expenses by $460,000. And here is our cash trend. So we've kind of seen this continuing kind of increase in cash over the last five years, which is a good thing. Does anybody have questions for me?
Tell me some questions.
I have one. At your State of the City meeting, you mentioned that we've been in black for two years. And we wanted to thank you for that. That's a big achievement. You also mentioned that there were $650,000 that we were able to put toward a long-term debt. I didn't see that reflected anywhere in this audit report.
I don't... That... I'd have to talk to the finance director and let you know, I did preface that, because that was prior to the audit. The audit was going on at that particular time. And there's always, I don't make it sound wrong. There's a switching of funds, not a switching of funds, but reallocation, I think is the right word, to different locations.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
And also, on page 43 of your financials, you have your long-term debt. Put it out. That'll kind of show that. And then we paid down some inner funds that were balances due between the funds. And then we paid down some inner funds that were balances due between the funds this last year.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us.
Item number four, consideration and direction to prepare an agreement with Albert and Hopper Jr., Architectural and Engineering Services. We have some speakers. I was just going to bring some people up to date where we were. After the fire, we held a town hall meeting on November 20, I'm sorry, November 30 of 2017, and that was at the Royale. And as I recall, there was 80, 80-some people there. It was facilitated by Melody Green. As a result of that, for those people that actually voted and voiced an opinion, the overwhelming majority wanted the new City Hall to be located at the same site of 118 South Arizona as the present of the old City Hall. On August, and at that same time, people had ideas about checking other buildings at other locations. On November 30 of 2017, I held a town hall meeting, asking for citizen input regarding location, size of the City Hall, and so forth. And I also indicated at that point that those buildings that we had learned about or had subsequently been told about had been checked out, and the presentation is still on the website and talks about each one of those buildings. And as a result of that, on August 30 of 2018, by a five-to-zero vote of the council, the council passed a motion for an RFP, RFQ for A&E services. And then, that was October 15, 2019, and that was by a five-to-o vote. We had two members that were unfortunately absent at that point, indicating that the location of the City Hall would be at 118 South Arizona. Reason I'm bringing that up is because the RFP, RFQ was site-specific. With that, we have Lynn Cartchner. Mr. Cartchner, you have your three minutes, sir. Welcome. Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'm kind of the only engineer around here. I've been here for many years. I've run the Busby system, wastewater system back in 2003, got it out from under the heat here. What I want to do today is give you a few answers for some of your questions. I've been rehabbing buildings, adobe, concrete, lumber, you name it, through the years because of deterioration from the annual shifting of the bricks, they'll crawl out from under the loads and let the trusses drop. We've repaired that for many years. You know, I have no doubt that, you know, our architect can do the job very well, and I have the greatest confidence in him. But if you'd like, I could take you to numerous buildings here in Bisbee and Douglas that have been rehabbed that are much stronger and better than they ever were before. I would like to see a fireproof building built at your building site. And to start with it, put in all-new plumbing, electric, and put a new refiner, so you're in good working conditions, and see where your money is going to start to run out. Contractors don't want to bid this, and so they really don't, they didn't invest us in contract at all. They're afraid of it. You need a design builder, you keep your hand in there, and approve what they do, approve what they're paid for at one of your city staff, keep an eye on them. But, you know, I'm enthused that the thing can be done. I've heard that the concrete had deteriorated. Totally untrue. I'm telling you as a professional engineer, the concrete is okay. You're going to put steel on the outside, steel on the inside, bolt it all together, it's going to be way stronger and stiffer than it ever was before, and much better. Hurricane allowance and seismic activity, everything, it's all going to be tied together like a brand-new building rather than an old building. So, you know, it will cost you a little more to restore it that way, but everything will be new. And of course, I don't think you have too much nostalgia for these quarters. You know, you've got to be wanting to get out of here. So anyway, I support Mr. Hopper and what he's trying to do, and I will help you in any way that I can for free. Okay? You like that, I will do it for you.
Good number, sir.
So, anyway, I live in Douglas, but I'm up here two, three days a week, and I'm still doing engineering work.
Thank you, Mr. Cartchner. Appreciate that, sir. You've got your three minutes, Mr. Cartner.
You're going to pull this out?
Sure you can.
I'll start it.
As long as you're going to put it back when you're finished.
My name's Dave Carton, and, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city manager, thank you. I may be beating a dead horse, so please bear with me, that's okay? There's a runway and a right way to make decisions. You can make them emotionally, or you can make them based on the facts. And the first question that I think I'd be asking is, why didn't your ad hoc committee for studying the new City Hall have two members from each ward? And then the city staff could have been advisory, but there was only three people on it, two of the city staff. I went out and canvassed 11 business owners in Warren and in San Jose, and I asked them, would you build a new City Hall with the $2 million? And they, they all said no. It's a waste of money, it's a waste of the taxpayers' money, there's too many other things that can be done with. One fellow said, I learned when I was really young, to pay your bills first. What do I need to do to get that?
You're better now.
Okay.
Put it over to the side, give it a little bit.
He said, I learned to pay my bills first because I learned a lot about cash flow and the fact that I might be spending too much money. Another one said, it's a waste of the taxpayers' money. Another one said, well, we've got all the roads going the pot here, not all of them. We've been doing a lot to help the situation, but we need money to take care of our roads and our infrastructure. And I'm an owner of a business here, and I say, what about a new park in San Jose? San Jose does not have a park. There's no place for people to be in the community, to come together as families, and there's no equipment for adults and children to use. And another one said, this seems to be a typical attitude here in Bisbee. Doesn't matter because the city's going to do what it wants to do. Well, I don't share that, but that happens to a lot of people. I also talked to two Public Works employees of yours, and they both said, we don't need a new City Hall. This one's fine, this will take care of everything, and I know it's uncounted property. Does the new City Hall have any value to the average citizen in this town? No, it does not. They think they can't buy into bricks and mortar and paving and landscaping and whatnot. Is it an example of runaway or undisciplined spending? I think it is. I don't think this has been thought out about what the $2 million could do and the rest of the community as opposed to building a new government, building. So I'm asking you, as a city council, to please think and reconsider what you have voted on.
Time's up.
Yep. And take a good look at it, please.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
I'm not mechanical, as you can tell. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Ken Budge, Ward 1. You probably have received a memo that I asked to be distributed to you about some City Hall alternatives. First, let me state that I don't want to be Johnny-cum-lately. I've always supported the City Hall being rebuilt. I spent seven years there, I liked it a lot. But over the last little while, after Councilmember Lou put it on hold, and I started looking at the numbers, seeing it was coming in at 1 point, or 2.8 million dollars, and I went on vacation, and I started looking at other towns, and I'd been visiting about four different towns and looking at how they've been doing the repurposed buildings. I started to just think, what can we do? And so I produced this situation, but I'm not just leaning it out there, I'm thinking the city's going to do something about it. My first alternative, of course, was, you know, let's buy the Lyric Theater, repurpose it into City Hall, and then buy the pay parking lot. Well, I just spent over an hour yesterday with Bob Vint, one of the highly architects out of Tucson. He came down as a favor to me. We went and spent over an hour in the Lyric, went through the whole thing, and I'll be honest, it will not work. We do not have the money to do it. So, but I wanted to do that diligent work, but I couldn't get it done until, until yesterday. So that has to come off the table. But I still believe there's other buildings within the city that could be repurposed and get it in under the $2 million. My point being is, if we can't make it happen in the old section, there is things we can do with the old City Hall. The structure itself could be repurposed into some other alternatives, and I would gladly suggest those if I had more than three minutes. But, but I would like to consider also things like a big building like on Consignment. Another one that's come to my attention, I haven't had time to research yet, would be the Catholic Church School, the old school up there, the three-story. That could be repurposed, that would be about the right size. We don't need the high school, it's just way too big, and not in the parking, but the Catholic school might work. There's other buildings we can consider. Now, I'm just putting this out as an alternative for you all to think about if you can't come, we can't come in under the 2 point, the $2 million. I've checked with almost, well, two, two major architects out of Tucson, and I've also talked to Al. His estimate of $210 a square foot, it's coming in at $300 a square foot out of Tucson. That's, that's the reality of what it takes to build a new building. And there's just not a lot of competition out there for low bids, and you don't always want to take the lowest bid hoping that those people will do you a job. So that's my fear, that maybe this won't work out, and so I just wanted to think there is other situations, and I'm going to do some research, and I'll bring back what I can to you for that. Thanks for listening to me.
Thanks, Mr. Budge. Ms. Coleman.
So this is coming back to you from your previous meeting. I'm hopeful you have some time to look at what's your level provided, and if you have any questions that we have to ask.
Mr. Mayor, since I'm the person who put this on hold, and I have two objections, but I noted I'd like to speak on this issue as an advocate to move this item forward. But before I do that, I'd like to request a waiver of the five-minute rule. For me to speak as an advocate, it's going to take me a little bit more than five minutes to do this.
Well, actually, you're speaking as a council member, so you're right.
Okay. I'll take that as your rule, and thank you. There were two reasons that I tabled this issue. The first reason was that there was a discrepancy in the closing date, which was listed by a subscription bid company. And if that mistake that they made had been based on the synopsis that the city sent out, then we would have had no responsive bids to that contract, and we would have no choice but to go out and advertise again. I spoke with the staff and with the mayor, and we resolved that issue. It was an error on the part of the bid company, so that objection is moved. The second reason that I tabled the motion was that I needed time to analyze the proposal from the selected firm, and I want to thank the council for giving me that time, and I've done a due diligence review of that proposal. And I have three problems with it, which I want to go into detail. But before I do that, I want to set some context for you as it pertains to our city's unfunded debt. I attended the mayor's meeting on the State of the City on two days before the last council meeting, and at that meeting, I learned for the first time that our debt was $32 million. That's $6,000 for every person in the city of Bisbee. A tax collector came tomorrow and said, you've got to pay up, that's what we pay. That's our dilemma. How do we take care of that debt? You mentioned at the, at the meeting that $650,000 was able to be sent, paid toward that debt. If we paid $650,000 a year, it would take us 50 years to pay off that debt. If we apply discrete rate of return tables to that debt, it isn't long before the interest overwhelms the principal, and we can't get there from here. That's our dilemma. We have a debt that we can't deal with. What's the solution to that problem? I don't know. There isn't one on the horizon right now. Maybe the state of Arizona will decide that Bisbee needs to have an emergency manager like Flint, Michigan, or Detroit, Michigan did, and maybe they'll just dissolve this council in this form of government and take over. I don't know what's going to happen, and I don't think any of us know what's going to happen either. So with that in mind, and keep that, keep in mind, I'm coming at this from a financial perspective only. I have accepted the site for the new City Hall. I've only been on the council for six months, so I'm not going to argue with votes that have taken place before my time. I want this to be done in the most economical way possible, within the budget that we have available to us. I'm not in favor of incurring additional debt for the city of Bisbee. That's not on the table for me. So with that in mind, I want to identify the three problems that I found with this proposal. And, and keep in mind, it's a very competent firm, they have the skills to do this job, and they have a very reasonable estimate of the cost of their, for their services. So I take no exception to that. The first problem that I'd like to address is the scope of the project. 92, 9200 square feet, and a proposed budget of, at this point in time, $2.8 million. The scope is excessive. It's 25% more than the current square footage that a staff of 12 people occupies. The budget has gone, I've been here six months now, and I've watched the budget go from 1.9 million to 2.2 million, to its present position of 2.8 million. And I've seen documents that have been sent to the city manager that suggest that 4 million is a more realistic figure for this building. I agree with that. I think that the concept proposed by the selected firm would possibly take us that high for two reasons. One, the concrete is, no matter what anybody says, it's substantial. It's below code requirements. The rebar is smooth surface rebar, out of position. I would not, as a registered civil engineer, certify that building is redeemable unless you encase both sides of that concrete in structural steel. That costs a lot more money than we have in the budget. The add alternates in the proposal cannot be justified economically. We cannot build a complete patio that exists over there now, and a and a plaza, which is, in effect, a meeting ground for people in the community. It's just not financially feasible with the budget that we have. The solution? The council must cut back on the scope for this project. We need to get it within a reasonable limit. Starting at 7,300 square feet, which is what the staff occupies now, is a good starting position, not 9,200 square feet. Problem two, the proposal lists one concept design. That concept design is a premise on retaining the portico that exists over there now. Saving that portico because it is an unforeseen condition costs money. We don't know what we're going to find when we tear those walls down and leave that portico standing. That could be a budget buster as far as I'm concerned. It also sets an unreasonable building elevation. By going through that portico, you've established the mezzanine level of that building. You're adding another 10 feet for a story above it, and you have a basement that you have to deal with. The proposal addresses the possibility of keeping that basement. That's not feasible economically. It also lists two, excuse me, three pairs of bathrooms for the building, which indicates to me that consideration is being given to building a three-story building. And I don't find that economically feasible. This concrete, as I said, is substandard. Three stories are not a financial, are not financially viable. The solution to this problem is to direct the staff to contract for two additional concept designs. A single-story building, a double-story building, within a reasonable scope of 7,300 square feet. Eliminating the existing portico, all vertical concrete should be demolished. A new portico can be designed if you want to pay homage to the old one. That's fine with me. That'll probably work within the budget. So, and finally, it needs an engineering cost comparison between the alternatives so that the city, the council, and the staff can evaluate the pros and cons of each concept design. And finally, problem three, once the contract is signed, there's no turning back. The solution to that is to direct the staff to negotiate three services, each one with its own notice to proceed. For instance, the architect gives us three alternatives of the building. We decide which one we want. Or we decide it's not feasible and can't be done. Then we stop at that point in time and don't proceed any further. If we, if we agree with the concept, then we, then we move on to the next phase, which would be bid document production. Once the bid documents are produced, then we can issue the next notice to proceed to go into contract management services. Services between architec, the city, and the construction firm that's selected, because this is going to be a bid, a design bid build, not a design build. And those three directions to the staff are policy, the budget, and the scope. Deliverables, we have a right as the city council to ask for those two concepts. And finally, contractual safeguards to make sure that if we get in trouble on this, we don't have to go all the way through the construction. We can halt and reevaluate and move from there. Those are the objections that I have to the proposal. It's nothing personal. It has nothing to do with individuals. It's specifically technical, and it has to do with money, which we don't have. So with that in mind, I would like to make a motion.
Please sit.
I move that we authorize the city staff to prepare an agreement with Albert Hopper Jr., architect, for architect engineering services to include the following directives. Have the scope of 7,300 square feet not to be exceeded without council approval. The maximum budget of $2 million not to be exceeded without council approval. Excuse me, that was A and B. C, authorize selected firm to develop two additional concept designs. One is a two-story building, one is a single-story building. Both concepts without the original portico. D, contract to be phased. Concept designs, bid document preparation, and construction management services, each phased with its own notice to proceed. Present concept, present concept designs to council and public for consideration with recommendation.
I'll start. We have a motion second. We're open for discussion. I have a couple of questions of council, actually. First of all, the statement, to my understanding, that...
You said council. I thought you said council.
Oh. The lawyer. My statement is, or my question, statement is, that what we're doing here is authorizing the city staff to enter into a contract with Mr. Hopper's firm. And within that contract, it's a negotiated instrument, that certain things can be enumerated in that contract, such as, and not to exceed budget of $2 million. How many square feet you want. And I believe I'm correct on that, that those are contractual issues.
It's correct.
And that contract has to come back to the council, and the council ratifies that or authorizes the signature of that contract. So that if that contract came back and it said that the cost was going to be $2.1 million, then the council, at that point, has the opportunity to say, no, go back to the drawing board, make it smaller, whatever we have to do to get back to that $2 million mark. Now, I'm correct on that, too, I assume.
Correct as well, or you start the process completely over again.
Correct, okay. All right. So with certainly respect to Mayor Protem Pollock, because we have discussed this. And I'm wondering if the, these facts that I just put out are, in fact, the same basic information that Mr. Pollock's asking for in his directed motion. 7,300 square feet, obviously, could be negotiated. Mr. Hopper may, if we say 7,300 square feet until, unless you have to come back to the council, then if Mr. Hopper goes, I can't do that. I can do 7,800 square feet. And it comes back to us, and we then say, no, we want it 7,600 square feet. Or what I'm saying is, if we allow that negotiation to go on during the contractual negotiation, then it's not coming back and forth and back and forth. And that's what I'm, I guess I'm sort of arguing against your motion at the same time.
Sounds like it.
Yeah.
But I'm still not clear on what your argument is.
That's, your motion is being, is potentially hamstringing the process that is going to take place during a normal contract negotiation anyway.
You're wrong in that assessment. Asking for additional alternatives gives the architect more opportunity to use his skills to come up with solutions that we haven't thought of. We're boxing ourselves in if we have already made up our minds that the proposal submitted is the one we want to build.
But we, by us authorizing, moving forward tonight, we are not indicating that this is the, that we are having a building, a two-story building built with a portico. We're not authorizing that.
It's what was proposed. It's not sufficient. We need more to make a reasonable decision as to how we're going to spend the $2 million we have without having to borrow additional funds at 4% for 30 years.
Yeah, I'm not even talking about buying.
I am talking about...
Well, I'm not. And I'm discussing the fact that nobody is talking about anything over $2 million at this point.
I could...
That is, that is, in the RFP, as I recall, that there was a $2 million figure.
Do you have that?
I don't have it in front of me.
I haven't seen that. All I've seen is $2.8 million as a proposed budget, which is excessive.
Well, I, I was under the impression, after meeting it many times, that the RFP RFQ said that it was a $2 million project.
Well, then, there should be no objection to the point that I put in this motion, that we limit the budget to $2.0, $2.0 million. In every project that I've ever worked on, $50 million worth of capital construction, we always told the architect what the budget was, and we told him what the square footage was. It didn't mean that it couldn't change. It just meant, this is your starting point. Work from here. And we need to do that right now.
And I have no issue with the $2 million. I've said that. It's not needed because it's in the RFP, but I have no issue with that. My issue is indicating, hamstringing the fact that it must be 7,300 square feet.
It reads, 7,300 square feet not to be exceeded without council approval.
I...
There's nothing objectional in mind.
Well, no, but when that contract comes back to us and it's 7,400 square feet, we have to approve that or deny that.
Right. And the architect should be prepared to defend that request. A reasonable request with the right justification would result in me saying, I vote for that.
Okay, well, I, there's no reason to, your points are made, and my objection is made, and so we're good.
I have a question. The procedure, once, if this is approved, the procedure then is to take a look at the design, to go through, not the design, I would go through...
If this is, if this motion is approved...
What is the process at that point?
An agreement will be prepared and brought back to council.
And that agreement's going to have the square footage? It's going to have the $2, $2 million? What about the other points that Mr. Pollock made? Is that also going to, that type of thing is also going to be considered in that process? Because when you read that, I'm thinking that's the process that we go through.
Well, that was my point, but if you're asking a question and then you're letting it talk.
I know, I'm sorry. Right, right, right. That Mr. Hopper would work to prepare a design. He would bring that to council for approval before moving forward with the engineering phase. And then, once it was engineered, then the council would make the determination to put that out for bid based on the estimated, engineer's estimated cost to build. And then bids would come back, and the council could decide whether or not the bids were within their budget to proceed. So there are steps at which the council has the opportunity to move forward or not based on the outcome of each step. Is that all?
Partially, okay. I'm just concerned about some of the things that Council, Mayor Protem Pollock has said. Not the $2 million, the amount of square footage, that's all the process. The other two points that you made, I'm sorry, I've already forgotten what they are.
Two deliverables, a single story and a double story at 7,300 square feet versus the 9,200 as proposed. We've reduced the scope. That brings the budget down. We get two options to choose from based on engineering analysis of their cost and their value to the community. We base our decision on that.
Okay, but isn't that what part of, what the process is going to do?
Yes, so this, it's a preliminary analysis that's been provided on the space and the budget need. Once there was an agreement in place, the architect would determine what the actual need for space is. So for example, you know, I see that the preliminary analysis includes 300 square feet for the city manager's office. I don't need 300 square feet for the city manager's office. And we've talked about several things that are in here. This current preliminary analysis of space and budget states that it doesn't include the public works department. Looking at the square footage, we could easily include the public works department. So it's a matter of working with the architect to say, yes, that's your preliminary analysis, but here are actually ways that we can configure space to make it very usable and include the public works department. So that would be part of the ongoing process.
Okay, so the whole process it would take into account with Mayor Protem Pollock? As a, I mean, those idea, not specifically those ideas, but what, the process includes those factors that would be looked at?
Yeah, we're gonna, right. And actually, the drawing that is in here is a concept sketch for the site. It's not a final design by any stretch of the imagination. I mean, it doesn't even need to be one of the three.
Yeah, let me, let me indicate real quick that the 96...
Two.
96, 9,200 square feet. That came from a prior city manager that was looking at, and without any pricing put together with it or anything else. And that figure came from a prior city manager. This is not what Mr. Hopper has gone through and decided we needed because we need to get him on board before he goes through and decides what we need.
Right, yeah. So all, that, the negotiations and all of that would be...
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
So the process that we were intending to put in place up here, that would cover Mr. Pollock's concerns? Do you feel that way?
No, not at all.
And your objection is?
My objection is that you always give the architect a square footage and a dollar amount to work from. It can evolve from that point into more than what's in paper. But he needs that figure and that square footage to adequately come up with his level of effort to do the job. And he's going to base his fee on that number, those two numbers.
That's what they're going to do with the contract.
It, there's no harm in directing the city manager to work within parameters. All my motion does is establish parameters for this project so that we don't end up with a runaway train that we cannot control anymore financially. It's already been suggested by people in writing, and I have the documents here, that this project should cost $4 million. $4 million at 4% for 30 years is $6,900 repayment. We can't afford that. That's 25% of our unfunded debt. Now, do we want to put that on top of, on top of what we already owe and can't pay? No, we don't.
Okay, okay, I think, okay. Well, I'll... Mr. Pollock, if your motion, if the motion is simply $2 million, isn't that the stopgap that we're really looking at? If he can build a 10,000-square-foot building for $2 million, isn't that the stopgap we're at, is the $2 million and not the size of the building?
No, it's both. They are both related to each other.
Well, of course they are, but...
Well, then, you ask me your question and I answer. No, they're not.
Well, I, okay, respectfully disagree. If you have a dollar figure, then you can only build into that dollar figure. Okay, any other, any other statements, questions? Ms. Cornyn.
Mayor Protem Pollock?
Nay.
You made the motion, sir.
I'm sorry. I was answering his last question. I was answering his last question.
Councilmember Giacominno?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Nay.
Councilmember Klein?
Nay.
Mayor Smith?
Nay, but I want my vote to reflect the fact that it is, has nothing to do with the architectural firm, it's the restrictions placed within the motion. And with that, the motion passes for three. Resounding.
I have copies of this if you need.
Yeah, Ms. Cornadell? I have number five. Discussion and possible direction on the proposed fee schedule. Let the room empty here. Ms. Coleman?
Yes, so.
You don't, yeah, would, do you want to speak before?
I'd like to.
That would be fine. I'm sorry, Ms. Coleman. Let's have Ms. Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I want to express my concerns about the wording of this agenda item. Although we've had received an email from the, the meeting, the statutes require involving agendas, and as the statute, open meeting law statute suggests, that agendas should be worded with sufficient information that the public should be able to understand content, what is going to be discussed. I don't believe that the wording of this agenda item in, in any way indicates what is going to be discussed, a proposed fee schedule. So, I'm hoping that the specificity with which you just passed the last agenda item will also transfer to future agenda items, and not when you write an agenda item that there would be sufficient information for the public, the general public, to know what is being discussed. Over the weekend, since Thursday, I have asked many people if they had any idea of what a fee schedule was. Just discussing, just saying discussion and possible direction on the proposed fee schedule, and nobody answered that, what they thought a fee schedule was. So, given the fact that these are fees that are going to be increased, for the most part, I understand that you will be deciding on this fee schedule at, at another future meeting, but it would have been helpful, and it would be helpful in the future, if we can put as much detail in these agenda items, so that the public can adequately understand what is being discussed. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Chaking? Done? I'm sorry.
I'm trying.
Oh, sorry.
I know.
Thank you. You need to speak in, into the mic, please, ma'am.
What?
Speak into the microphone. There you go. You can, we can, it'll move down.
No.
There you go.
Oh, it's gonna fall in.
I, I too saw the.
You can just hold it.
I too saw the agenda, the fee schedules. I didn't know what a fee schedule was either, so I didn't have the agenda packet. In doing so, I had started to, to research it, because I wasn't sure what it was. And I just. I'm not very good at this. And I came across the, one of the statutes that addresses the, and I didn't notice it statute number nine dash four nine nine point fifteen. And it said that there's supposed to be a written report or data collection that's supposed to be done along with this fee schedule. It's supposed to be submitted to the court, but there's also, we're supposed to be, there's supposed to be a fee schedule. And I'm curious as to if we did that or not. Also, I know whether it is, whether it's presented, whether it's approved, disapproved, whatever, I know this is the beginning of the 60 days before it can actually be put into place. So, I'm just curious. If it was put, I know it's been submitted, I will be doing a spreadsheet first, so I can see. Okay?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your time.
My apologies. Yeah, you can just hand it to the city manager.
Both parts. Yeah. Hand me both pieces.
Thank you.
She's mechanically adept here. Thank you. Ms. Coleman?
So, I did work with the staff, looking at the fees that are spread throughout the current city code, to look at if the fees were adequate to cover the city's cost of providing the services that the fees are associated with. Also, a way to put those fees all in one place, so that you didn't have to necessarily find the section of the code to find out what the associated cost would be. Therein, creating a fee schedule, what is in your packet and what has been posted on the front page of our website for very close to 60 days, by the time you take action, we will meet the 60-day requirement, is a comparison of current fees that have been pulled from different places within the ordinance, and then are proposed fee schedules moving forward that would supersede the fees that are currently in place. So, this is your opportunity to have some discussion and provide direction. You know, I'm willing to take any questions or make any clarifications perhaps that you'd like to have. Also, do know that this will come back for adoption. So, this is not your final decision. This is letting me know, do you want it to come back for adoption? Does it look like what you anticipated? Is there anything we can do to make it more readable or usable? Sure.
I have a question.
Sure.
There's a lot of NAs in the, in the fee schedule that I didn't understand.
And as far as, oh, okay, so, the liquor, so, for example, let this, liquor license application processing and posting fee, there would not currently be one within your current city code.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, there's no, I, I found no mention to the fees for the nuisance ordinance, which I objected to as too, too.
Right.
Too high.
Yes, so, at the time that we were working on the short-term rental ordinance, the nuisance ordinance, and the animal ordinance, it seemed like those had the potential to be adopted ahead of the fee schedule. And at that time, those fees were going to be established with that adoption. We will need to go back and add those to the fee schedule once act, well, we can add the short-term rental on that one once adopted. But for nuisance and animal, we will have to go back and add those to the fee schedule once the ordinances are put in place. But because the ordinance doesn't exist, there's no fee associated in there.
Thank you. One last question.
Sure.
I noticed in the fees for building permits.
Yes.
That there was a, there was a steady progression down the percentage of the project value versus fee. It went from like 3.9% down to .7% as you got higher in value for the construction project. What formula was used to derive this?
This actually was a collaboration with Dan Patsworth, who is at the county planning department, and has been processing our building permits for several months. So, we worked with him on approximating how to get our fees in line, more in line with what he felt would be appropriate for, for these values. So, that, that's how it was derived.
Thank you.
Right, and a lot of these fees were also based on, on research of, of other cities and produce counties and some more, to kind of make them all, or make us more competitive. Some of these haven't been changed in 30 years or more. Questions over here, comments? Yes?
A question. There, in the code, there is a fee schedule for low income, and I didn't see that on, on this. So, is that something that's separate?
No, thank you. Thank you for pointing that out, and I will make sure that we can get that incorporated. Thank you, I appreciate that very much.
Yeah, that's present within the individuals and the, you know, I, I was after this when I was getting into office three years ago, and it's, it's finally coming about, to get all these into one place, so that we can, if we have a change, we have one place to make that change instead of throughout, because we find that we get, we drop too many.
Then, Joan, I, I believe that we also talked about just changing the language in those sections to allow staff to make adjustments for low income rather than cutting an exact amount, but we will definitely take another look at that and make sure that we're on the right track.
Because I know that that's been a concern.
Yes, yes, we'll definitely do that. Thank you.
Are we, are we ready to?
Well, no, I guess, I have a term.
Okay.
I would rather hold up making any decisions until we have a complete packet, because we have things that you say you're still going to add to.
Oh, is it, well, this would be a direction that.
We're not making a decision.
To review that and bring it back to a future meeting. So, whether you would like to have this brought back for adoption at your meeting on the 21st, or your meeting on February 4th, if you feel that you'd like to see it again.
Yeah.
Bring it back on the 21st, and then you can decide, you make a decision on the 4th.
Because, yeah, I would like to see it in, in a complete form before I make any decision on how to act on it, because I'd like to be able to.
Yeah, so, we will clarify that question. And then, did you have anything else, other than the specifics about the low-income adjustments?
Not at this time.
Okay, okay, perfect. If you think of something, let us know, because we can certainly address that before your next meeting.
We're not even voting on anything tonight. We're just, we're just providing direction to the city manager.
Yeah.
That they're on the right track. I, I think that everybody is in agreement with that.
Okay.
And that, please do, continue with the change of the low income and bring it back to us, so that we can peruse that.
Yeah.
Is that going to have to be, a counselor, is that going to have to be, that addition have to be advertised in additional 60 days? No, anytime you do new ordinance or ordinance change, you'll just update your fee schedule. It will not have to be re-advertised, because it will be incorporated, or that new change relative to the new ordinance and the new fees will be incorporated. Sure, okay, great, thank you. All right. Item number six. Possible approval of a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing and consultation with the city attorney to provide legal guidance with respect to a notice of claim pending litigation and dismissal of open meeting law complaints against the city.
I move that we enter into executive session for the purpose of discussion and consultation with city attorney to provide legal guidance with respect to a notice of claim pending litigation and dismissal of all ML complaints against the city, per ARS 38-431.03A34.
Seven.
We have a motion, we have a second. Those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are in executive session.
Are we leaving?
Yes, ma'am.
But we're coming back.
But don't go too far. Those in favor coming out of executive session signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We're out of executive session. Next item is city manager's report.
All right, I will try to be really, really quick. On minimum wage, we did make adjustments to fire department wages, pretty much, you know, across the range, because we needed to lower employees up to minimum wage. So, adjustments were made, carry reviewed, they should still be within budget. I think you had prepared for that when you did your last budget run, so you should be fine there. We have a paperless option available for packets in the future, and I think we have five.
But I'm going to pick up a couple.
And we'll pick up a couple more, so we can have an iPad loaded with the agenda and ready to go through it, if that's the way that you would prefer today. Nina tried it last night.
Last night.
And the, our council loved it, the arts commission loved it.
They did.
So, yeah, thanks to Nina for that. Fleet, so, vehicles, the city has officially purchased or made arrangements to purchase all of the vehicles that we had from the county. The county had asked us to take possession and ensure the vehicles ourselves. And some of them, we have purchased, two police vehicles outright, and we're going to complete some of the purchases by paying 45 cents a mile that goes completely to the depreciation of the vehicle and paying it off. And we'll have two more vehicles coming to be purchased by the fire department. So, to supplement the vehicles from the county, we'll have a presentation at your next meeting from E-Fleets, which is the enterprise program for cities. The police department is looking at two leased pickup trucks and possibly a leased pickup truck for public works. Those were actually coming in at a savings over what we were paying the county for the vehicles. And then, also, hybrid sedan program for police response vehicles going forward. So, that presentation will be at your next meeting. The city attorney is going to send out an evaluation form. It's time for my six-month review, believe it or not. And that's going to, I know, where did the time go? That will take place on February 4th, so you have plenty of time to respond to the attorney. And then, just to let you know that I have been meeting with folks, and there's interest in putting a potential proposal together to Habitat, to bring kind of the first Habitat program into town. So, I'll update you, it would be inside and out, and I'll update you inside.
Great, that's it?
That's it.
Ms. Hanson?
Yes, thank you. Youth council, we've been having a significant amount of problems in trying to get some of the, get youth involved with the youth council. So, I met with the city manager, and we came up with an idea of doing a presentation, and the Boys and Girls Club has been nice enough to let us use their facility. So, we will have a youth council presentation this Friday, January 10th at 4:00. Anyone from the age of 13 to 17 are invited. Please get the word out. Also, parents are invited, if they want to see what it's all about. But this is the opportunity for youth to, to be a voice for the, for those people.
That is notice, correct?
Yes, it is.
And so, it is notice, council, this, 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 well, Ms. Klein?
I, I'm bringing up again the news dissemination, city news, and transparency. I kind of feel like I broke a record at this point. You know, I, I'm going to try to not be really rude here. You know, I, I'm going to try to not be really rude here, but when we're finding, as council members, we should be kept informed of whatever's going on within the city, instead of finding out on the street and sitting there with egg on your face because you have no idea what people are talking about, or, you know, I get a text that says, have you seen the newspaper today? And that was on the eminent domain, you know, Hillcrest is just one of those, you know, just one of the things, and, yes, we had to deal with them one year and a half ago, or a year ago, or whatnot, but removing all the tenants, even though it was for safety reasons, I understand all of that, but to learn about it, you know, when we come to a meeting, and not really have any answers or anything like that, that was, that was hard, I mean, it was hard for them, it was hard for us. And then, to get a text, you know, about the eminent domain issue in the paper was, you know, and then I get, is that what you had planned all along? Well, no, we didn't have anything planned, but it would have been nice to have some kind of information or a heads up, or this is a possibility, or, and then the other thing was Erie Street, you know, and it almost seems like we're just putting all these bad suggestions into a bowl and pulling them out to see what we're going to stir the pot with next. However, it would be nice for council, all of council, to at least have some kind of warning that this may or may not be coming up, just so we can get our facts together, and when the public asks us, we can have some type of an answer, or, you know, something, some kind of a plan. And, and then the other thing that I have is, I've been getting a lot of questions on the charter review committee, and in our charter, we're all equal, mayor, council, we're all equal, but it seems like you, Mr. Mayor, have your hands in everything with the charter review, and that's pretty inappropriate, and my understanding is that you also gave them a notebook or papers or whatnot on suggestions that you wanted. I guess I would, for transparency or for information, I am requesting that, a copy of that, as to what your suggestions are.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Coleman is sitting next to me at charter review, and so I think if I was being inappropriate, I'd be told, but that's fine, and I believe that Ms. Cornado is, is present at charter review, and so you may believe what you wish to believe. As far as my suggestions, that was provided the first day for the first couple of chapters, it wasn't a secret, and they were passed out to everybody, so I have no issues with you having a copy of it. Go, buddy.
I move if you're German.
Second.
Those in favor of Germans signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, over the nose.